Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon and welcome to the forum on April 27th, 2015. Today we have kind of a two-step program here. First, in a few moments, we're going to learn a little bit more about Cornelius. And following that, we're going to get a chance to listen to the vast majority of candidates for the available positions for school board in Banks. And we'll get there in just a second, we'll introduce that. Folks, before we go, first of all, of course, thanks for being here. And for those of you that have been coming here regularly, just as a quick reminder, don't feel overly compelled to tip, just look at your bill, and we're now at a 20% automatic add to your bill. I don't think I'm gonna stop talking about money. I have to remind folks who haven't taken out memberships, memberships are available, there should be forms up there. And you know, we are halfway through our original matching grant, when it was given to us about a month and a half ago. We have until the end of June, so anybody who hasn't found extra tax rebates or whatever that they really need to contribute, remember, we're 501(c)(3). Folks, today, continuing with our tradition, looking at important issues, we're going to take a look at the fire levy that's coming up in Cornelius. And we have today the former mayor of Beaverton, the current city manager of Cornelius, Rob Drake. If you'd come up, and we'll have questions after this.
Thank you, Rob. It's a pleasure to be here. It's been a long time since I spoke to the forum. And I was gonna say a lot of old friends, but I knew somebody would take exception to that, so hello, longtime friends. I've been with the city of Cornelius three years, and it's fair to say that Cornelius is a very tight community. And it's a city of 12,161, and we're wedged between Forest Grove and Hillsborough. And it's a really nice community. And everything in Cornelius is tightly spent, and we don't have a lot of excess. And this fire levy, it is a five-year operating levy. And on the way over, I listened on the radio, and there was a song that played that reminded me very much of our levy. It was a Bee Gees song called "Staying Alive." And that's exactly what this is for the city of Cornelius, so I'll explain real succinctly. The city of Cornelius does have its own fire department, but we have only four full-time firemen, four professionals. And the rest of our fire service is provided by what we call college interns. These are students who go mainly to Portland Community College, but also to Shemecka Junior College. And they're in fire science, that's the degree they're earning. And we pay them a $1,200 a month stipend. And that stipend helps cover their college costs. And we put three interns on every fire truck with our one professional. And the city has been doing this for eight years. We've had two four-year grants that are paying for the college interns. And the second grant is running out at the end of June, and the federal government told our fire chief, "Don't ask again." So what we're needing to do with this operating levy is replace the funds for the interns. As part of this too, we have only one paramedic who works for the city. He's 40 hours a week. And so this levy would also add two firefighter paramedics, so that we could offer full paramedic life-saving firefighters to our team. And it would allow us to be sure that we had a full-time professional on every truck. If we don't have a professional available, we can't send the interns out. They're college students, and they're learning, and they need to learn under the guidance of a full-time person. The levy is 48 cents per thousand, and if you had a $200,000 home, it would be $96 a year. So in that sense, it's a real bargain. We're currently operating about as thin a department as you could. And if you would read the Oregonian editorial that we provided here, they really listened. This succinctly says what the issue is. They strongly endorsed it. We think the Forest Grove News Times will too, we'll find out Wednesday. And the combined Forest Grove-Cornelius Chamber strongly endorsed it too. So we have a lot of friends with this. If it doesn't pass, well, the council on its own motion can add to our general service fee, but that's been very unpopular in Cornelius. And so the council would have to decide whether they would or wouldn't do that, and it's sort of a catch-22 for the council. Because if the levy fails, and they add to the general service fee, some folks might say, "Gosh, they aren't listening to us, we said no." And the council, though, feels a great obligation to provide fire service. Because if we don't have these interns paid for, we will not have fire service in Cornelius. Today, we have mutual aid with Hillsborough, Forest Grove, other cities in the county. But I can well imagine that the city councils in Forest Grove and Hillsborough will say, "Gosh, we shouldn't be providing free service to the city of Cornelius." So we're hoping voters will see this, they'll understand it. It was clearly stated by the Oregonian that they think the need is justified, and so that's basically it. The fire department's done a great job in Cornelius, they've done it with a really tight purse string. But without this grant being renewed another four years, we will not be able to put people on the road. There will be times of the day that we probably could. We have 50 volunteers. Only nine live in the city, and none of them works in the city during the day. So if the interns aren't funded, we'll have one fireman for each truck 24 hours a day. And so you can see this program really needs to be funded. With that, I'd be happy to answer any question.
The Cornelius Police Department is currently merged with the County Sheriff's Department for tax savings. Has it been any discussion of the Cornelius Fire Department merging with nearby fire districts? Thank you.
Well, Jim, that's a good question. Actually, on the fire, on the police service, we are contracting with the Washington County Sheriff's Office. And voters are paying for the same amount of police service as they did before, but we're getting a higher level of service, and our department doesn't have the problems it did previously. The other thing that really helps stretch resources is that the sheriff's office is using our police department, and they're using that as their west-end precinct. So we have a bare minimum of eight sheriff's cars a day extra going in and out of Cornelius, giving us extra police service. And on fire, I don't know if we could merge it, Jim, with someone else, but I will explain that in the case of Forest Grove, we pay for a quarter of the Forest Grove Fire Chief's time. And as a result, Chief Kinkade operates the two departments pretty much as one unit. And what happens is, if there's a call in Forest Grove for a fire, and they need a backup, they rely on Cornelius, not Hillsborough, not Gaston, not Beaverton. And so the level of service, even if we contracted, let's say, with Hillsborough, it wouldn't save us any money, because we still need the same amount of coverage.
Rob Zollman, forum member. Thanks for being here, Mr. Drake. As I was listening, I was thinking in terms of selling this to the voters. Part of me is reminded, there is no such thing as a stupid question. I thought I'd remind you that before I actually asked this one. I'm wondering if it's possible to convince insurers that if you have a stronger fire service in Cornelius, they can lower premiums for insurance. That sounds silly to me, but it also sounds really smart. So is that at all possible?
Rob, that's a great question, and I wish I had asked you. I had the time to ask it, because it makes great sense. Most of us are under what's called an ISO fire rating. And in the city of Cornelius and Forest Grove, we have a four fire rating out of 10. My recollection, in the Beaverton area, due to the bigger coverage from Toala Valley Fire and Rescue, it has a two coverage. And you're absolutely correct. If we were to lose our department, or we're to have the uncertainty of a truck rolling on any given point in time, our chief believes it would probably go to a fire rating of 10, which is similar to what people in the rural area have, that if you're more than five miles out of town, you get a, normally get a 10 fire rating. And the higher the rating, the much more the cost. So it was a great question, because the concern is that if this doesn't pass, we would go from a four to a 10. And according to the chief, ISO does a rating about every 10 years. It has been 10 years since they've been out at the west end of the county. Consequently, if that happened, if the levy fails, and we don't have the coverage, we would probably get a 10 out there. As I've explained to some of the business people, if you don't like your fire insurance cost today, just wait. So that was a great question, thank you.
Hello, Rob, and thank you for being here and sharing good information about Cornelius.
Thank you, John.
So my question revolves around paramedics. When you have a fire, you occasionally, not all the time, but occasionally you have somebody who is injured, and needs to have the service of a paramedic or a doctor. And usually, you don't have doctors answering the calls, you have paramedics there. So I see the importance here, and you're talking about having one person drive the truck, and that's it. The paramedics are really important for fires, and so I really see the emphasis here, and so I hope the voters also see the importance of that.
Thank you.
And I'll kill you on your campaign.
Thank you, and I'll comment to that. The chief has a great example. In Forest Grove recently, actually, one of his employees' sons, the two boys were wrestling, and the younger one was spilled over, and apparently it broke his leg. And it was his femur. And when the paramedic got there, they were able to give him a pain medication that calmed him down, and got him, helped get him ready for the ambulance. If there hadn't been a paramedic, which Forest Grove does have paramedics on every truck, if there hadn't been a paramedic, the young man probably would have lived, but he would have been in a great deal of pain. A paramedic can administer the right pharmaceuticals, while a regular firefighter can't. And it was only recently that one of our full-time people, the one of the four, received his paramedic certification. He's working only 40 hours a week. So if he's not on the truck, currently Cornelius has no paramedic. And prior to him getting his certification, we had no paramedics working for us. So what happens in a lot of smaller cities, and the west end, I joke, it's a different time zone from here in Beaverton. But some of the services are a little more bear service, and in the case of fire, that's the way we have been. And the chief had recommended that as long as we were gonna ask voters, why don't we see if we can get two more professionals who are paramedics, so that people can take vacation if they're sick or injured. Give you another example. Due to injury, and somebody being sick, and another one being on vacation, this week we had only one full-time firefighter. And we were able to work one person overtime, and we borrowed somebody from Forest Grove, but that's just no way to run a fire department. And so it's a little leaner in the smaller cities than it was in Beaverton or Toala Valley Fire and Rescue, but this is still pretty bear service in Cornelius.
Hey, Rob, thanks for coming in, appreciate your presentation. I grew up in a small town with a volunteer fire department. I was curious, you said that only a small percentage actually lived in Cornelius. Talk a little bit about maybe what their motivation is to, because if they don't have a specific vested interest, then why are they volunteering to do that? And also, if you have, if you have a lot of people replying, or do you have to go out and shake the bushes to get volunteers to come in?
Well, I'm gonna answer yes to all your questions, Bill, but this day and age, what's happening, and it's happening nationally, the interest in being a volunteer is waning. They still have to go through X hours of training to be a volunteer. And the chief explains that nationally, departments are having difficulty finding people. They are shaking the bushes, but in the case of Cornelius, a lot of our long-term volunteers are getting older. One of the men helping with the campaign is still listed as a volunteer, but Christian hasn't been out in a truck in at least a decade. He owns a business, lives in Cornelius, owns a business in Forest Grove, and he just says, candidly, "I don't have time to hop a truck on a weekend or an evening and go fight a fire." And so demographics are changing a bit, and what we're trying to do is not rely on the volunteers as much as we used to, because they just aren't there, period. That's really simply the way it is. Other questions?
Let's hope Mr. Drake can light a fire under those voters. I'm sorry, I've been waiting for at least two weeks to say that, and I'm sorry to inflict that on you, but it just had to come out. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to move to the Banks School District coming up here. Folks, we have a few candidates. As a matter of fact, there's a total of six, only one was unable to be here today. So we'll be looking at five candidates for the different positions. Each speaker will have five minutes. And then after everyone has spoke, if the candidates could stand up here for questions, that would be great. Then again, five minutes for each candidate. We have a timekeeper, Spencer, if he would raise his hand, there we go, that's who, just watch, he'll give you the sign when you have 30 seconds left, a minute left. Said that in the wrong order. And questions, please, so that we can get questions asked and answered. Can the questioner please limit it to about 30 seconds? And could each candidate limit their responses to about a minute? Questioners, when you are asking your questions, please identify whether it's for a specific candidate or for all candidates standing up front. Thank you. Folks, for position three in Banks School District, we have Tom Forrest and Lori Schlegel. If Tom would come up? Thank you, Tom. Ladies and gentlemen, Tom.
I like the whole of mine. I do a little singing, and I came here, and I first thought, I got an invitation for like some kind of open mic thing, I'm supposed to do a little Elvis, "I have a blue Christmas without you." And no sing-along, so I guess, I guess I must be here for the Banks School Board thing. So it seems to be traditional here to say, you know, talk about ties in the community. So I'll go back to probably the best-known of my relatives. In 1866, there's a fellow named Simon Berger-Iverson, who left Wisconsin to be with his family in Wisconsin, and he worked there for logging about 10 years. But then, and then he married a gal named Esther Searle, and they came out here, and they tried to do some logging, and they got some ox teams, and they did pretty well, bought some sections, bought some homesteads. Unfortunately, well, actually, and at the same time, there's another couple, Esther's sister, Lorette, and her husband David Drew came out here, and those two happen to be my great-grandparents, so they came out here, and they were doing some logging, they did okay. And Simon, his family shortened his name to Benson, so they were doing pretty well with the logging thing. Esther was working the logging camps. Unfortunately, she got tuberculosis in about 1884. So they went the cold effects for a while, she eventually died of tuberculosis in 1891. And they had three kids, and the two girls went to Chehalis to live with my great-grandparents, and Esther and Lorette's mother was out there as well. So my family in the area goes back to about 1880. And my grandfather grew up there in Chehalis, my mother grew up in Vancouver. My parents married, and my dad wanted to join the army, so off he went. Did a couple tours in Vietnam, but when he wasn't in the army, we were here, I was living in Beaverton across the street from the post office where it's being built. One of my earliest memories was from the Columbus Day Storm, which is a four-year-old boy, it was very exciting, candles and the lights, I loved it. Then he was off again in the war, we were in army bases, we came back, and I went to Hightech Hillsborough, back in the days when it was two-lane blacktop, Cornelius is two-lane blacktop, you get off of Sunset, there's a four-way stop 185th, you don't stop again till you get to 10th and Main in Hillsborough. So and the biggest employer in town was the Birdside Food and Vegetable Packing Plant. I, as a kid, was always a geek, quite a geek. And when I graduated from Hill High in '76, I said, "You know, I wanna go where there's more geese." So I was fortunate enough to have the opportunity to go to Massachusetts, to the Massachusetts Institute of Technology where I studied, I got a degree there. Was there 20 years, and at some point, you know, nice as it was, fun as it was, I missed family, so I come back here. And I've been around the world, been almost every state in the country, but it's the nicest place to be, the people the nicest, the country's nicest, and it's the best place to be. So kind of the point of my having gone to MIT, I wanted to do management degrees, what I got. And I got a, it's been MIT, of course, had a lot of science, physics, calculus, thermodynamics, geology, control theory, kinds of things that a lot of people sleep, but I saw all the management courses, accounting, finance, operations. And me being MIT, of course, it was a very specialized kind of thing that I did, which was business process reengineering, building computer simulation models, systems of nonlinear differential equations, solved in time series, basically it's rocket science. For which, surprisingly, there isn't a lot of call for, but what I did get from that was really, oh, only one minute, okay, hurry it. Is a, is a knowledge, of course, of technology, but also of how technology can be used as a tool to refacilitate, to improve business processes. And most importantly, though, in the intervening years, I've applied that knowledge and those skills to solving organizational problems, solving organizational issues, facilitating collaboration. I always start with people in a room like this with a whiteboard saying, "What are the pain points, what are the problems?" And we work through, you know, and collaborating, and organizing, and prioritizing what the problems are, and bringing them together. The Banks School District has just recently completed a middle school. It took four times to get a bond issued to improve that, there was a bond issued in 2008. To do a $25 million middle school and high school failed, failed 2010. 2011, they scaled it down to just a middle school, 11 million, still failed. The 2012 finding the middle school passed with 13 votes to spare. And I guess I see my clothes now. But anyway, I would like to bring my experience, my knowledge, my skills of the area, and my tech savvy to work collaboratively within the community of Banks to get us a new high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Lori Schlegel, Lori, would you join us, please? Lori, here, thank you very much.
I didn't do the sound test, so I'm okay.
Yeah, you're fine.
Great, thanks. I carry a clipboard with me wherever I go. Don't wanna forget what I'm saying. Thank you, first off, for being here. It's nice to see this many people involved, and it's pretty exciting to see this group. I'm here, I'm, well, I'm Lori Schlegel, and I'm the vice chair of the school board. And uniquely, I'm ready for this position, because I think I have something that nobody else on our board has, is experience being a teacher in a classroom. And I spent 33 years teaching, just a couple miles down the road over there. And I bring that skill to the school board. The job, do the best for kids. And that's the bottom line for me, is what's best for kids. I think every school board should have one teacher on the board. It gives a whole different perspective to what's going on. I remember having a conversation with our board chair and the superintendent, and we were sitting around talking about something, and Bob, our superintendent, looked at me and said, "Lori, you're thinking like a teacher." And my thought was, "Yeah, that's good, that's a good thing. It brings it back to the kids." We're not a business, we can't run like a business, we're not supported like a business, and we take every kid that comes in the door. And that's one of the important things about education, is that we teach all kids. We understand the need for training to implement the best practices. Our district has some wonderful new things, we have computers coming in, but we need to get the training to all the teachers too, so they can utilize them to the best. We have meetings once a week for all the staff to get together and to discuss kids, but those also need to be, training needs to be involved for that too. So that's one of the things that I wanna, wanna look for in being a member of the board. Our bottom line, what's best for kids. Now, there are a couple really important issues. One of them is to keep, keep our kids actively involved in school. And I'm not talking about just high school, but kindergarten through high school. Our kids have to wanna be at school, love being at school, and love to learn. And that's our job, is to make sure they do that. We have some great programs going on, we have some elementary teachers that have, on their own accord, developed some programs, after-school chess. And I think they had about 40 kids turn out for after-school chess, it's just this tremendous program. Robotics, there are all sorts of things that are available. But we have to figure out ways to do things different from our funding. And our funding's not providing us with this, but our teachers are creative and love the job of teaching, and they know what's best for kids, so they're part of that. We need rigorous classes, and we always keep this in our mind, rigorous, strong things, classes. One thing that I learned as a teacher in the last school, by Totting Hillsborough School District, and we had mentors for all of our kids. It was a way to keep our at-risk kids in school. It didn't cost anything, but it had huge benefits. And I had one little guy in my sixth grade class who wanted to be a custodian. He so loved the custodian, so the custodian became his mentor, and this kid went out and got the little keys, and he put them on his pocket, and every day would go grab his, his big dust mop and be part of the, the school that way. So we all need to have the involvement. I don't know if you read yesterday's Oregonian, but we had, in the business section, there were two things. One was about rebuilding a path for career tech journeys, and talking about funding and grants that are available, the CTE Revitalization Grant Fund with Gunderson. They want, they want kids, they wanna train kids, they want them to be coming to their facilities after they graduate from high school and be a part of that. There are things that we can do. I'm excited about this, I'm excited to work with our new superintendent, and hoping that I get to be on the board again for another four years. Thank you. You're lucky I didn't get to the next page.
Your next page may have some answers to questions that will come later. Ladies and gentlemen, for position four in Banks, there are two candidates. One was unable to be here, the forum makes a point of inviting all candidates, and we can only invite. I would say that Mr. Ron Frame, who was unable to be here, is still on the ballot, and I just wanna mention that. But we do have Todd Iverson, candidate for position four. If Todd would like to come up and join us? Ladies and gentlemen, Todd Iverson.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity. First of all, I'd like to commend all the people who are running. I know they're all volunteers, and they're all running for the right reasons, trying to make our, our community and our schools better. Why am I running? Well, one, I've grown up in Washington County. I've been here all 48 years. I'm an Oregon State grad, liberal arts major, sociology. I wanna continue to get back to the Banks community. My wife, Carla, and I have lived in Banks for the last 16 years. All three of our children have been involved in the Banks School District. All three of our kids have been in individual learning plan sessions, and they've all thrived. Two of them have gotten out of those sessions with the support and... two of them have gotten out of those sessions with the support and, from the, from the teachers, and we, we've seen the passion, and we've seen what the school district can do for the kids, and that's what we want to be part of, and that's why I want to be part of this, to continue to give schools, to continue to give back to the community, to continue to give back to the families, and help the community grow stronger. I have over twenty-five years of experience with the Washington County Sheriff's Office, I'm a sergeant for the Washington County Sheriff's Office, during my time of working with the citizens of Washington County, I believed I've learned many valuable, transferable skills, I've been in, I've had multiple ranks, and I've had multiple special assignments, and been on parts of multiple teams, and I'm currently a sergeant assigned to the professional standards unit, where we do all our hiring, recruiting, and internal affairs. What we do with that, and what I think transfers from that, is my project management experience, budgeting experience, human resource training, economic understanding, labor law issues, and understanding the population growth forecasting for the future of Washington County. We have one of the most diverse counties in the state of Oregon, and also one of the fastest growing, and we need to address those issues and make sure that our schools address those issues and expand appropriately. I have an open, honest communication style that I've helped the Sheriff's Office pass many levies and bonds over the years, and I believe I can use that style to help us build those relationships we need, and make sure that communication goes out there to help us with our high school improvement program, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm running. I have multiple years of evaluating staff performance, building performance plans, and writing policy, another job that the, the school board uses and has. I have many years of community service in the Banks area, I have over nine years of head coaching experience in both the Banks Youth Football Program and Soccer Program, I was a board member of the Banks Youth Football Program for over seven years, and president for over four. The experience gained in these positions was invaluable, the relationships built with the players and with their families was invaluable, and it shows that even with small budgets, hard work, and volunteers, astounding programs can bloom, and again, it's, it's all about the kids, it's all about building our future, it's all about giving back, and giving those kids the hooks that keep them in school, that keep them coming back, not all kids are going to be athletes, there's kids that are going to be in drama, they're going to be in music, they're going to be in band, they're going to be in chess club, we have to find ways to reach all of them, keep them engaged, keep them in love with school, keep them coming back, because that's the future, that's what we need. My years of coaching, supervising, being part of law enforcement, have truly, truly given me the ability to communicate and build relationships with diverse groups of people, individuals, and teams, I enjoy building trust and open lines of communication and accomplishment of shared goals and visions, I believe my skills and experience coaching, leading, and building relationships makes me an excellent candidate for the Banks School District Board, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you, Tom. For position five, we have the two candidates, Mr. Harris and Mr. Moore, will Will Moore please come up to the front? Ladies and gentlemen, Will Moore.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak this afternoon, I appreciate it very much. So why am I running for school board? Well, there's three reasons. The first one I call commitment, I will be, I was fourth, and my kids are fifth generation, having gone through the Banks School District, we've all developed, been able to get a tremendous foundation from that, from our education in Banks, gone on to go to the universities we wanted to thrive, enter the occupation we wanted to thrive, and that foundation come from, came from Banks School District, so I want to give that back. So to that end, I have a high standard for Banks School District, I believe we, we need to set a target in anything we do and pursue it. My standard for Banks School District is that every student that goes through Banks Schools be able to enter the university of their choice and thrive in that university, or get the job and enter the occupation of their choice and thrive in that occupation. That, to me, is what schools do, what K through twelve does is provide that foundation, so that's why I do it personally, and that's what my commitment is. Secondly is my experience, I have been on the board, I was on the board for eight years, up to a year and a half ago, stepped down, had some other issues I needed to deal with in my business world and my personal life, but I was on the board during the most difficult economic time that any of us in this room had experienced, and that hit the schools very hard, and we were able to accomplish great things, the district was able to accomplish great things during my time on the board. When I arrived, now it would be almost ten years ago, the district was in a very, very bad spot, we, we, we had had horrible financial mismanagement, which put, put the district in a worse position than any, than, than the districts already were struggling financially, morale was low, programs had not been implemented, the district was struggling, over the next eight years, we proceeded to replace the top management, get strong leadership, build a relationship from the top to the very bottom of the district, build relationships amongst our teachers, administrators, an example of that is, when I first came on the board, union negotiation periods were two to three weeks, the last four years, they were two to three hours, and that's the way it went, primarily driven by the superintendents that we were able to bring in, find and bring in, in some cases, and actually, in the two primary cases, from within the district, and another example of that relationship development, both of those candidates were put forth by the teachers, and board was asked by the teachers to consider these candidates, and we did so strongly in an open search, and selected them in both cases, and those superintendents have gone on to do great things. So during that time, not only were we able to get that established, get the district on sound footing, we were able to excel, we, we provided more offerings during a difficult economic time than almost any school of our size, we have the level of support amongst our teachers and administrators that is incredible, we have attracted some of the top talent in the, in, in, in the school districts in this state, including bringing people from out of state, we have, we have the highest graduation rate in the state, our test scores have gone higher every single year and continue to go higher, the level of programs, teacher development, programs for, for kids, et cetera, has gone through the roof, we have incredible community support, all because of what the district has done, all of us working together, and with the board helping, set the direction for that. So that's the second reason I want to do it, because of my experience. The third reason I want to do it is because I have the background that I can bring to the school to help develop these things. We will never have enough money to make our schools what our kids deserve and what they need, the only way we will be able, be able to achieve the standard I've set, where kids can do what they want in school and what they want in an occupation, is to provide the leadership that develops the school, from the top to the bottom, from the board to the superintendents, to the school administrators, to the teachers, to the support help, those are the people that move the district forward, as the board, it is our job to develop systems and processes and programs and leadership that does that, that's what I've done in my thirty years of building businesses, and now as an executive coach and management consultant. The last thing I want to say is, and the thing that I'm not most proud of, because we did a lot of things, but the last thing we did before I walked out was complete the construction on time, under budget, of a new Banks Middle School, which was second or third in the step, comprehensive step, it took eight years to completely restructure the long-term facility needs of the school, and start, get a fifty-year, a campus plan in place, build a middle school, which is the next step en route to a high school, to provide the facilities our, our students need, so that's why I'm running, I ask for your vote, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore, would James Harris join us, please? Ladies and gentlemen, candidate for position five, James Harris.
A mic and public speaking, neither one a very fun opportunity for me, first of all, I want to say that all the candidates that are out there, Tom with his tech experience, Laurie with her school background, Will with his experience, and Todd with his experience, each one of these individuals Banks is going to be lucky to have part of. I'd like to say a little bit more about Todd, because I've had the opportunity to work with him, that guy is an amazing worker with the community. I honestly didn't want to come and do this today, but my wife and other community members talked me into it, and, you know, I don't want to get up and talk about myself, it just doesn't sound very natural or fun to me, I don't know how many people are familiar with the Potemkin village terminology, back in the late eighteenth century, Catherine the Great of Russia wanted to go visit her parts of her country and brought different ambassadors with her, and in that process, the governor wanted to make the country seem like it looked better, that he was looking after, and so they'd break up, make this facade, this show, to make it seem like it was a lot better than it really was, and that's not my intent, to make me seem like I'm any better, or create any kind of facade, or anything of that nature, I'm just clearly going to mention the things that I'm involved with, and in five minutes, you're supposed to be able to know whether or not I'm the candidate for you, which is really not very realistic, in my opinion. But anyway, I went to Portland State University, I had the opportunity to teach undergraduates there, I also was, by the faculty, put in a position, a mentor position, at the university. Instead of having a career in mind, somehow I started a construction company in my last year of college to help pay for school, and by some fluke, I ended up creating a company called Cedar Mountain Construction, upon the graduation of Portland State University, I decided to run with it instead of looking for a job and, and doing other things, and in that opportunity, I've done what everybody said you shouldn't do, I went in business with my brother, and I worked for friends, so I made it work, and that right there ought to be able to tell something about my ability to communicate and work with people, and I wouldn't change any of it, working with my family has been the greatest opportunity I've ever had, I have tons of repeat customers that are best friends of mine, and with that, my construction company has been able to survive through the recession, the economic downturns of two thousand and eight, and still stay in business. Our current budget for our company is similar to the budget that our school board actually, or our school district actually has, I've been able to have the opportunity to provide for several team members of our construction company, and have the great opportunity to build homes for people in our community, and besides my professional experience, feeling that that is the huge aspect that I can contribute to our community, I also have been a Boy Scout leader for the community, I've been, had the opportunity to serve with the youth in several different aspects, like Todd, I've been able to be part of the football organization, I've been a head coach for the football, little guy footballs, I've had the opportunity to team coach with my wife for baseball with the Little Midgets, National Midgets, and I'm also currently coaching at the high school level for track and field. I have the great opportunity to serve in a lot of other different aspects besides just in our community, I sit on the board of directors for the Oregon Motorcycle Riders Association as the treasurer, I also sit on the assistant director position of the youth safety education program that is responsible for the whole state of the Oregon, for the youth's safety and protection for the youth on motorcycles. With that, I've also had the opportunity to serve in various organizations within my church, the one that I'm currently sitting, sitting in is managing all the teachers and the curriculum for our church. And lastly, as far as experience, I've had, I've been appointed or asked by the superintendent and this current school board to sit on the budget committee, so I am currently involved in that aspect with the school, and why am I doing this? For my family, I have four kids, I will be invested in this school, by the time my youngest one is done, I will have been in the school area for at least seventeen more years, that's why I'm wanting to be part of the school board, is for my children, thank you.
Thank you very much, James, would all the candidates please come up here, we have chairs that are at least as comfortable as where you've been sitting, and as you guys are coming up, questioners, please feel free to start lining up at the mic, and just as a reminder, please keep your questions to thirty seconds or less, and identify whether you're asking an individual candidate, a couple of candidates, or all of the candidates that are sitting up here. With that, I will turn it over to the first questioner, and thank you.
I'm Bill Kroger, I'm a forum member, and thanks to you all for coming in today, I wish you all the best of luck, I was curious, anybody who wants to answer this, or all of you if you want, I was curious what your take is on what used to be called shop classes, you know, alternative education and stuff, we used to have it pretty strongly in Oregon, and then it kind of went by the wayside, I think about eight years ago, the Labor Commissioner and the Superintendent of Public Instruction got together and started it up again with the help of some unions, and I think some schools are putting it back in again, but I was just curious as to what you thought about that and the importance of it.
Well, do we just go up, or how's this work?
Yeah, whoever wants, I'm sorry, whoever, the only way we can organize this with any sense of decorum is whoever would like to come up, please just answer at the mic, and then when you're done, you can sit and somebody else could come, so, there is no specific order.
I know I can speak from personal experience, my son, my oldest, not all, not all kids are going to go to college, my oldest, his passion is welding, and we do have some shop classes and fabrication classes, and they have to be part of, just like I said earlier, whatever, whatever hook there is to keep kids in school, we need to make sure that it's available for them, shop classes are part of that, just like drama classes, just like art classes, we need to make sure those opportunities are there, and we have to have skilled labor out there, my dad's a retired plumber, we have to have builders, we have to have construction workers, we have to have those opportunities available, and, and I think it was an underserved a few years ago, and we need that back.
More people answer?
Yeah.
Well, I clearly have a take on it, since I'm in the construction industry, the average intern right now is the age of twenty-eight for construction carpentry, there's a huge drop in age, about the forty, people in about their forties on up have a lot of experience in the carpentry skilled area, but there's a drop of about twenty years of anybody having any interest, there's a huge demand for people actually as a carpenter right now to come into that trade, and I can't even hire people that want to, because there's just not enough of them out there, I really feel, as Todd said, that there needs to be that available for people, because, you know, college is not the right thing for everybody, Forest Grove has a great program for not just shop, but to actually teach people how to do this type of trade, and others like electricians and stuff.
And that's one of the things that I was talking about with the newspaper, there are grants that are listed in there that we can pursue to provide more education for this, and lots of opportunities, so I'm hoping that's where we're going.
Yeah, obviously shop is very important, like I said, that's an example of a skill you have, you have to be able to have if you don't want to go to college, that's one of the programs that our district was able to save during the difficult times, not to the level we'd like to, but we do have it, it's a very strong program, I grew up on a farm, and I still use those skills that I learned in shop, and we have an incredible shop teacher, he's taken with the limited resources he has, he's done tremendous things, he has really engaged the students, he's opened their eyes to a lot of different variations in, in, in the vocational world, he's, he's active in FFA, FFA, and other things that are great opportunities for kids, so yeah, shop is, is a key part of it, we're doing it at Banks, we can always do it better.
Next question, Lee.
Lee Coleman, forum member, I think I and, and the community in general, want to hear your proposals to solve the dropout problem, since we have to support many of the dropouts when they go to prison, are you prepared to seek more money out of gain share devoted to education, are you prepared to fight for more money from the lottery, are you prepared to, to seek more support from the legislature?
Excuse me, that's over thirty seconds, and it's about four or five questions, so I want to, want to be fair, not only to the time, but also to get these folks a chance to answer what you're stacking up, so, boy, it's quite a challenge, would anybody like to take this barrel of questions? Sir, go ahead.
Dropout program, gain share, to an extent they fit together, I do believe in gain share, schools are getting some of gain share now, yes, I'd like to see them get more, yes, we should fight for every nickel we can get.
Yes, we should fight for every nickel we can get. However, having said that, that's not going to solve the problem. The problem solved by engaging the kids at a young age. Lori referred to this. There are some steps that need to be taken there. We need to, we do need to increase our staff level of counselors, career guidance people, and start programs earlier in the school program so that we can engage students as they go through school so that when they leave, they have, they've had a more fulfilling experience, so they have a reason to stay because there's a career they're pursuing, not to channel the kids, to engage them. And this is, engaging them in school, starting at a young age, through counselors and the proper training of our students and the proper, our teachers and the proper focus, will affect the dropout program the best and it will reduce it, it's the best way to reduce it.
Next, anybody else who can stay under one minute? That was very good. Please, go right ahead.
One of the issues I think is focused on that is the involvement of the school. In the last several years, we've had a high turnover of administrators and I think that's one of the areas that I want to focus on, is with that high turnover with administrators, it lacks support from all the way down. So for example, the PTO is announced for the elementary school, they're only going to have one fundraiser or one activity next year from four because they're not getting enough people involved. And I think getting people involved will help with the aspect of having the dropouts.
I would, I would talk towards the issue of the dropout rate. Being in law enforcement, I definitely see the other end of that spectrum and I have seen it for twenty-five years. The involvement of the community, the involvement of the, of children from a very young age, as Will discussed, that involvement, that, and then just as James talked about, the involvement of the volunteers. I think that's one of my strengths, is getting people involved, getting people in, and that's something that I would, I would like to continue to do on the school board, is keeping that excitement, that enthusiasm, bringing people in. When I was president of the Banks Football League, our, we had youth continue to join our program. We had over a hundred and twenty families involved in that program, going to our volunteer fundraisers. Take that energy, bring that into our school program, because we've got to engage the children at a very young age and keep them involved and keep that hook so that they continue to grow.
Okay, next question. We have time for two more. Go ahead.
This question is for everybody. Would you please comment on one of the three? The Constitution of the United States, the Declaration of Independence, or separation of church and state? With the understanding that nature's God and God is nature in our Declaration of Independence.
And that question was brought to you by Chris Leslie, a forum member who forgot to declare himself.
Sorry.
Anybody like to tackle that?
I'll tackle. I think the Constitution is great. I think the Declaration of Independence is great. And as a person with a strong faith, I believe it's important to separate church and state.
Sure, go ahead.
I would have to echo that. I've sworn to uphold the Constitution, so.
Great, great. And I think it almost seems like you've asked an apple pie question and everybody has a slice. All right.
Palomode.
You don't have to scream it. I don't mind, sorry, bad joke. Go ahead, last question, but the afternoon.
John Blackman, forum member. For all of you or one of you, which of you at the level of a fourteen-year-old child or better speaks a language other than English?
Yes, at this point, yes. So is, I'm sorry, but I'm sitting here, and again, you're free not to answer, but should I take that as no one speaks another language?
Not at fourteen-year-old's level.
Okay, that's, I appreciate that setting.
My child does.
Okay, great. That's part of how the world is changing. Because it was such a quick question, we do have time for one more. Sir, go right ahead.
Thank you. John Williams, my question deals with a little bit of the federal government and what's going on in schools and programs that are coming in. How is everybody set to adopt the new Common Core in your school so that, maybe that might be attached to federal money too, I don't know if you don't attach, if you don't adopt the program, but could you talk to me anything about the Common Core that is new, possible curriculum that's coming in? Anybody have any thoughts about it? So, just curious things.
I will, as a former teacher. I think there are lots of positive things about the Common Core and I think it will provide rigorous teaching. Hopefully, we will get information from, from the Common Core and probably thinking about the testing that's also going along. I feel like we should all be involved in it and we should all be working for our kids and what's best for our kids. Thirty seconds. That it has positives, that we can find out things about what we need to be teaching kids and that they will be able to learn, rather than specifics, they'll learn how to use things generally and how to apply it to other areas. And I think education does this continually. We make a new test, we start over again, but it's always, we learn from it.
I'd kind of like to echo what Lori says. We're always trying to balance accountability with freedom to teach and express and we haven't made, got it perfect yet. Common Core is an attempt to do that again. Testing serves a good purpose, does it serve ever for us? No. But I think the movement we've had in the last ten years towards trying to find a better way to assess and measure and introduce accountability, along with flexibility at the teacher's level, is a valuable process. And I think this is the next step in that process. One thing that I have observed though, is that the teachers that are in the district now, they accept this. When it first came out, the major emotion was pushback. Now the major emotion is, is an understanding, this is reality, we have to do a good job with what we have, we have to find where we are, measure where we are and try to do better. And that's serving a great purpose.
I'll be the odd one out. I disagree with the Common Core. And I haven't seen the very positive effects of it, especially right now in the elementary school. It's stressing the kids out to the point that my kids don't really want to go during all this testing time. I think that it's lowering the standard of the education instead of lifting it up. I feel that it should be reevaluated and done completely different. So those are my thoughts on the Common Core.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've come, ladies and gentlemen, I keep wanting to pluralize that word for some reason, it's because there's so many nice men here and women. Ladies and gentlemen, let's try that again. We've come to the end of our program today. Please let me take a moment to thank Mr. Drake who presented ably concerning the putting a fire under, okay, we've passed that joke already. Anyway, Mr. Drake had to leave, but we do thank him for his information and for his presentation. And ladies and gentlemen, several of you out there, I believe, have probably run for office, be it local office or high school office. Running can be fun, but it's a heck of a challenge and people who are willing to put themselves out there certainly deserve and have my admiration and respect and I believe they have yours. So with that, let me thank the fellows and ladies that came today, Tom, Lori, Todd, James and Will. Thank you very much for putting yourself out there and for joining us today. Thank you. And ladies and gentlemen, next week, we have candidates for the school board positions in Forest Grove. And the, I believe there's one position open in Sherwood City Council and we have the candidates for that. Same time, same station. We'll see you next Monday. Thank you.